Commissioners Court, Brazos County will meet in regular session on July the 30th, 2024, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners' courtroom of the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue. Our first item on the agenda is invocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, and all lead those. Father, I want to thank you again for your love and your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for the blessings that we have by living in a free this country and the world. Father, I pray that you will continue to bless this country and keep us safe. I ask, Father, that you continue to protect our first responders and our military who also protect us and our country. I ask, Father, that you be with us this morning as we make decisions for the county. I ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we had a few sign up. Kathy Fields.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I would like to read from the Congressional Record read in the U.S. House on January 1963 regarding steps towards achieving an ideological agenda. Number one step: U.S. acceptance of coexistence as the only alternative to atomic war. Two: U.S. willingness to capitulate in preference to engaging in atomic war. Three: Develop the illusion that total disarmament by the U.S. would be a demonstration of moral strength. Four: Permit free trade between all nations regardless of communist affiliation and regardless of whether or not items could be used for war. Five: Extension of long-term loans to Russia and Soviet satellites. Six: Provide American aid to all nations regardless of communist domination. Seven: Grant recognition of Red China, admission of Red China to the U.N. Eight: Set up East and West Germany as separate states in spite of Khrushchev's promise in 1955 to settle the German question by free elections under supervision of the U.N. Nine: Prolong the conferences to ban atomic tests because the U.S. has agreed to suspend tests as long as negotiations are in progress. Ten: Allow all Soviet satellites individual representation in the U.N. Eleven: Promote the U.N. as the only hope for mankind. If its charter is rewritten, demand it be set up as a one-world government with its own independent armed forces. Some communist leaders believe the world can be taken over as easily by the U.N. as by Moscow. Sometimes these two centers compete with each other as they are now doing in the Congo. Twelve: Resist any attempt to outlaw the Communist Party. Thirteen: Do away with all loyalty oaths. Fourteen: Continue giving Russia access to the U.S. Patent Office. Fifteen: Capture one or both of the political parties in the United States. Sixteen: Use technical decisions of the courts to weaken basic American institutions by claiming their activities violate civil rights. Seventeen: Get control of the schools. Use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda. Soften the curriculum. Get control of teachers' associations. Put the party line in textbooks. Eighteen: Gain control of all student newspapers. Nineteen: Use student riots to foment public protests against programs or organizations which are under communist attack. Twenty: Infiltrate the press. Get control of book review assignments, editorial writing, policymaking positions. Twenty-one: Gain control of key positions in radio, TV, and motion pictures. Twenty-two: Continue discrediting American culture by degrading all forms of artistic expression. An American communist cell was told to, quote, "Eliminate all good scripture from parks and buildings. Substitute shapeless, awkward, and meaningless forms," unquote. Twenty-three: Control art critics and directors of art museums. Quote, "Our plan is to promote ugliness repulsive, meaningless art," unquote. Twenty-four: Eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press. Twenty-five: Break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV. Twenty-six: Present homosexuality, degeneracy, and promiscuity as normal, natural, and healthy. Twenty-seven: Infiltrate the churches and replace revealed religion with social religion. Discredit the Bible and emphasize the need for intellectual maturity which does not need a religious crutch. Twenty-eight: Eliminate prayer or any phase of religious expression in the schools on the grounds that it violates. I just want to remind everybody, this is from 1963.
Okay, thank you. Cindy Wiley.
I'm going to finish reading from the Congressional Record. Twenty-eight: Eliminate prayer or any phase of religious expression in the schools on the grounds that it violates the principle of separation of church and state. Twenty-nine: Discredit the American Constitution by calling it inadequate, old-fashioned, out of step with modern needs, a hindrance to cooperation between nations on a worldwide basis. Thirty: Discredit the American founding fathers. Present them as selfish aristocrats who had no concern for the common man. Thirty-one: Bedeal all forms of American culture and discourage the teachings of American history on the grounds that it was only a minor part of the big picture. Give more emphasis to Russian history since the communists took over. Thirty-two: Support any socialist movement to give centralized control over any part of the culture, education, social agencies, welfare programs, mental health clinics. Thirty-three: Eliminate all laws or procedures which interfere with the operation of the communist apparatus. Thirty-four: Eliminate the House Committee on Un-American Activities. Thirty-five: Discredit and eventually dismantle the FBI. Thirty-six: Infiltrate and gain control of more unions. Thirty-seven: Infiltrate and gain control of big business. Thirty-eight: Transfer some of the powers of arrest from the police to social agencies. Treat all behavioral problems as psychiatric disorders which no one but psychiatrists can understand. Thirty-nine: Dominate the psychiatric profession and use mental health laws as a means of gaining coercive control over those who oppose communist goals. Forty: Discredit the family as an institution. Encourage promiscuity and easy divorce. Forty-one: Emphasize the need to raise children away from the negative influence of parents. Attribute prejudices, mental blocks, and retarding of children to suppress influence of parents, currently being done. Forty-two: Create the impression that violence and insurrection are legitimate aspects of the American tradition. Students and special interest groups should rise up and use united force to solve economic, political, or social programs. Forty-three: Overthrow all colonial governments before native populations are ready for self-government. Forty-four: Internationalize the Panama Canal. Forty-five: Repeal the Connolly Reservations so the United States cannot prevent the World Court from seizing jurisdiction over domestic problems. Give the World Court jurisdiction over nations and individuals alike. Again, I reiterate, that's from January 10th, 1963. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Keith King.
Hi, I'm speaking for a concerned citizen from Fredericksburg. The issue of how elections should be conducted, in particular the question of voting machines versus hand counting ballots. News articles and discussions on the topic centered on accuracy, manpower requirements, and the cost of elections. To form an unbiased opinion on the topic, I decided to disregard all previous conversations and input and start from the beginning. The beginning here in Texas starts with our Constitution, a document to which all state-elected officials are required to swear an oath, although I had sworn the oath several times. I had never done so as a public servant. I thought it appropriate to research the reason that public officials must swear an oath. To me, it was just common sense that military personnel were required to take one. I could not find a clear answer, but I did find some facts that supported a logical conclusion. I found that before a state could join the Union, the state had to agree to a republican form of government. As codified in Article 4, Section 4 of the U.S. Constitution, this means that the state had to have a constitution that represented the power of the people, the people being sovereign over government and not the government being sovereign over the people. The requirements to swear the oaths as enforcement of the rights and power of the people is outlined in the Constitution. I think this is just one of the many history lessons that should be taught. Reviewing our state constitution, I looked at Article 6, suffrage, Section 4 of that article directed our legislature to pass laws needed to detect and prosecute election fraud and protect the purity of the ballot box. I applied Article 6 to both sides of the debate. The county executive committee was having over elections. Looking at the voting machine process, ballots get fed into a machine and numbers get printed at the end of the day. One critical issue in the machines is the ability to detect fraud. The software the machines use to tally ballots is proprietary and cannot be inspected by election officials. There was a case in Mesa County, Colorado, where the files and software were inspected. This inspection found two different sets of results in the machine for the same election. Without such inspection, the accuracy of any tally of ballots is based on hearsay. The election authority must rely on what the manufacturer tells them about how the machine tallies the ballots. Regardless, there is no way to identify if any machine has been compromised prior to or during the tally of the ballots. I've heard several people mention the report by the vice president company that makes the voting machines. We have spent a considerable amount of money to make our machines less hackable, and a mission that their machines can be hacked. To take the issue one step further, supposed access to the software could be obtained. If it were determined that the software had been hacked and results manipulated, as in Colorado, the identification of who to prosecute for the fraud cannot be determined. Application of Section 4, Article 6 of our Constitution includes that machines fail to comply with our Constitution. If fraud is suspect and not just an error, prosecution is possible, unlike with machines. I find myself asking the question, why do we have voting machines if they're not compatible with our Constitution? The only answers I have are speculation. When I look at the current political situation in Texas, my conclusion is that too many officials have not performed their duty with honor. It is questionable if the individual performance of duty was based on malfeasance or ignorance, but it's clear that there's a force directing these activities, and this force allowed to succeed due to complicity or ignorance. Benjamin Franklin stated at the Constitutional Convention, "You have republic if you can keep it." Unfortunately, he did not expand on what the future would hold and what forces we might encounter that would work to destroy a republic. My conclusion is that people have been planting seeds of socialism and communism instead of seeds of liberty. People have not been educated on how to keep liberty growing. When I look at the situation here in Texas, consider how long Republicans have been a party in control of our state government, I have a feeling that there have been too many who have not performed their duty with honor. For 11 years, I've put my life in line in support of a constitutional country. My discharge says I do not so honorably. I expect no less than anyone who swears to support our Constitution's identity, even though they are not laying their life on the line to do so. And many evil seeds have been planted over the years, and the plants continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi. Kristi Rowe. There you are.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Christine Rowe, and I'm your friendly neighborhood tax collector. I said, "My name is Christine Rowe, and I'm your friendly neighborhood tax collector," for now. I wanted to remind the court, basically, and I did send an email, just in case you haven't had a chance, to remind you and the public that the office itself will be closed on Thursday to the public only. The staff will be there working. We'll have several departments there, and they will be helping with the transition because we have to completely stop everything in one area and start it new in another. And so, to make it a little bit cleaner for the public, they'll do that, and then on Friday, the office will reopen to the public. So, we'll be closed for one day. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we had completed last Thursday the final audit from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And this audit is to come in and basically touch everything that belongs to the state. There were two ladies that came in, plus the regional director, and they got down to the point of, we ran reports that morning of all of the license plates that we had, everything assigned, and they were counting every plate in the building. So, they are very meticulous about making sure that everything is there. They also spent quite a bit of time talking to myself and staff, asking questions, asking about policies and procedures, and they were very pleased with what we had. They said we're a very tight process, and I expect in about two weeks that the report will be submitted, and it should be very clean. So, that was a really great thing. The thing I wanted to comment on this morning was the fact that one of the ladies that came was actually shadowing the actual auditor. She's someone who has worked in multiple areas for Department of Motor Vehicles. She has been in multiple tax offices and served as a regional director and several other things. She's going to be one of the two dealer compliance agents under some of the new statute requirements this coming year. So, she was just following and making sure, and she was helping. And I noticed that she was looking around a lot, and she kept looking up at the ceiling and asking questions about our facility. And she made the comment towards the end of the day that we have absolutely one of the nicest, most functional facilities for a tax office that she has ever been in. And I thought that was a real great thing for Brazos County. She said, "Our queuing system was wonderful, that it was pleasant and effective and efficient for the public," which was really nice. It allowed us to take care of them quickly and efficiently. And the reason she kept looking up is she was looking for water stains on the ceiling tiles, and she said, "I haven't seen one yet." And she said, "Your maintenance department, your facility services does an excellent job." And that was the main reason I wanted to visit with you today was to make sure that you knew that facility services, I think they ought to get the attaboy, they take wonderful care of that building. And it has, it's nine years now that we've been out there, and it still is fresh and new. And the comment was that not only is it great for the public, but to work in a nice facility like that is great for the staff and great for morale. So, Brazos County does it right. I just thought you ought to know that. She also really liked our dumb waiter, because we have to get boxes of reports and storage things up and down between the second floor and the first floor. We don't have any kind of other way to get it up and down besides hauling it. And so, I don't know if the judge remembers or not, we kind of did two out of three falls over having a dumb waiter when they built the building. But she was just very impressed, and I thought that would be a great thing for you to know. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you for your service to the county. It's been spectacular, and we appreciate all you've done to make the tax office friendly.
We try to be. We smile as we take your money.
Do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, so that was the last one for number two. Number three is presentation and discussion. Presentation by Trudy Hancock, Elections Administrator on Legal Requirement for List Maintenance of Voter Registration Role. Trudy.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So, last week, there were some remarks made in court, and I wanted to address some of those to say that the statistics from the group that presented them or from the speaker of the group were correct. The statistics that they gave were spot-on, but the problem comes in the assumptions or the interpretation of the numbers and the interpretation of the reports. So, I wanted to address some of those. First off, it said 54, we have 54 voters over 100 years old. Seventeen of those voters are on suspense, should be gone. I'm not sure what the "should be gone," but we'll dive into that probably. Twenty-two voters with the same birth date of 1-1-1901. And then, the group submitted seven to 800 challenges, three duplicate voters with the same date of birth in the As, and then that we have 20,457 voters on suspense. So, first off, I'd like to talk about the voters that are over 100 years old. We do have 54 voters that are over 100 years old. Seventeen of those voters are on suspense. Twenty-two of those voters have the same birth date. You have to go back a long way in history to look at some of this information and interpret it properly. So, prior to the Help America Vote Act in 2002, so a day or two ago, you could walk in, register to vote with your name and a description of where you live. You didn't have to produce any documents. You didn't have to have a physical address, anything. That's all you did, and you got on the voter rolls. Now, it is quite different. You have to have lots of things, you know, to qualify to vote, you know, to be proved a U.S. citizen and a resident of the jurisdiction to get on the voter rolls. Twenty-two of those voters with the same date of birth. Fifteen of those have no voting history. Four of those are on suspense, and the others, well, let me go back. So, when the Help America Vote Act was enacted, it made the state, it caused the state to go into a statewide database. And so, they started having to require things like date of birth, social security number, driver's license, to be able to differentiate between people to make sure that people didn't, you know, weren't registered more than once. So, that's when the date of birth started showing up. If people were already registered, we could not require them to give us their date of birth. So, we do have a lot of records for individuals who appear to be 100 and however many years old, because the state uses a placeholder of 1-1-1901 as a placeholder for that birth date. And so, those voters are probably not that old, but because they have not moved, they have not changed anything on their voter registration history, they have not made a new application, we cannot force them to put that information on file. We do periodically send out reminders asking voters to update their information if they could. If the voter disregards that, then we, you know, we can't hinder, we can't block them from voting because they don't have a proper date of birth. I just wanted to let you know that of the 22 voters that are born 1-1-1901, 15 of those have no voting history, but just because you have no voting history does not mean that we cancel you. You have to go through the process just like anything else. We do have four of those voters on suspense. They got on suspense because, I would guess, because we sent them their voter registration card in the mass mail, and it came back saying that it was undeliberable. Now, I will tell you that we did have a 102-year-old voter vote in person in the primary. So, one of these individuals who is listed as having a birth date of 1-1-1901 did walk into her polling place on Election Day during the primary, and she, we do have a location at Arbor Oaks at Crestview, and she is a resident of that facility, and she did vote in that location. So, there are some things that may appear to be suspect or unusual, but they all have explanations. I have many times stood here, stood in public, expressed openly to the group that if you have questions, please call me. I can usually, you know, I would have known immediately what the 1-1-1901 was, but again, those questions were never posed to my office directly. The group has submitted, the next comment was that the group has submitted seven to 800 challenges. We have received to date 608 challenges to voter registration on grounds of residency. Four of those, 433 of those have been rejected due to the affidavit lacking required information, and I am working currently on sending out notification to the filer letting them know that their affidavit was rejected. Two of those were rejected for no cause. It was filed that the voter's address was in a RV park. As you know, just living in, you don't have to have a permanent location to be registered to vote. So, just because the address is a RV park does not in any way keep you from registering to vote as long as you're not registered somewhere else. Thirteen of those voters were already on suspense, and five of those voters that were challenged had more recent information than the information that was given to us. The grounds to challenge a voter's registration for residency, this question has come up since this has been a pretty hot topic lately. It has to be a sworn statement. The voter desiring to challenge a registration must file with the registrar a sworn statement of the grounds for the challenge that identifies the voter whose registration is being challenged and then states the specific qualification of registration that is being challenged. And the challenged voter has not met based on a public knowledge of the voter's designing, desire, oh, that should say desiring, sorry for the typo, to challenge the registration. So, you have to have public, you have to have personal knowledge that, you know, the voter no longer lives at that address. So, these are the parameters that were set out in advisory that we received from the state, that you must have, the affidavit must have an original signature, must be signed in front of a notary public or a similar official, must establish the request or is a registered voter of Brazos County, and must be based on the personal, on personal knowledge and not hearsay. Now, we do, the comment of three duplicates with the same date of birth in the As, we cannot, just because someone has the same name and same date of birth, we cannot just cancel those voters. We have to do what we call an investigation. We send out a letter to those voters. We have to go on what is considered a strong match or a weak match, whether or not to cancel those voters. So, we send out a notice of examination to those voters. At that time, they send us back their name, their address, their date of birth, their social security number, anything that helps identify them individually, and then we have to go from that instance. So, if it's a strong match, a strong match, the state, the legislature requires that we have name, date of birth, and either driver's license or social security number. So, all three of those things have to match for it to be a strong match for us to be able to cancel them. A weak match means that then the voter is placed on suspense, so that way, when they come in to vote, they have to show an ID, and then at that time, it's trying to, we try to rectify which, which, which VUID we are to use for that voter. So, there is a process when we do have duplicates on the roll. Just because someone has the same name does not mean, you know, that they're on the roll more than once. 20,457 voters on suspense. How does a voter get on the suspense list? So, any mail that we send a voter and comes back, we place them on suspense. So, most of that comes from the mass mail. Every two years, we send out new voter registration cards to everyone who's an active voter. We normally get anywhere from, I'd say, 9,000 to 12,000 of those cards back, that we have a process in handling that. When those cards come back, we send that voter a notice of confirmation. If they do not respond in the 30 days updating their address, then they are placed on suspense. If we send them mail and it's returned, then they are placed on suspense. Jury Services, we work with jury services when they receive their jury notices back that that voter has moved, then we go through the same process that we do with mass mail. We notify those voters with a address confirmation notice for them to respond to. And then also, there is the challenge process. There is a large impact if we cancel a voter erroneously. So, it could cause us to disenfranchise our voters. So, there was a discussion on why a voter wouldn't remain in suspense for two federal elections. We have voters who only vote in the presidential year. So, that is kind of the bookmark for the legislature on how long that cycle should be, because if you, if someone votes in the presidential, then they don't vote in the next federal election, but they're on suspense, and we cancel them, when they go to vote in the presidential, the next presidential, then they would no longer be on the rolls. So, we have to be careful about taking people off. That would also, if we canceled someone that was on suspense, would make them no longer eligible for a limited ballot. So, if you move, say you move to the next county or, you know, move out of state, well, if you move to the next, move within Texas, you are eligible to vote a limited ballot, which means- which means that if you move in your new county, you can go. They'll pull you up in the state system to make sure that you are a registered voter. And then you would be able to vote a limited ballot, which is only items that we have in common. So for our, the voters that come here, they only get to vote on the items that we have in common with where they're registered at. So most of that is federal offices, president, and then state rep, depending on that. But then also, they don't get to vote on anything local. So if you, if we canceled voters, then they're not on the rolls anymore, and they're not eligible for that limited ballot. For us, we think a lot about students moving in. We don't think about students going off to college just because we have A&amp;M here. But it would, the same would apply. A student is afforded to be able to maintain their residence here at their home, even if they move to another county. Now, that is unless they register in the new county. They can, they can register wherever they are moving to go to school. But they can maintain their residence here and vote here. They would vote either by mail or by coming back on the weekends and voting in person. A voter relocating for work but still has a residence here. You know, we have a lot of people who work for A&amp;M who relocate temporarily but want to maintain that local tie to be able to, you know, to vote for the people who represent them locally because they intend to return. And then also, the elderly who live in assisted living or nursing homes. If you are elderly and you move to assisted living or a nursing home, you can maintain your voting residency at the property that you lived at or that you own. And so just because you move to a assisted living or nursing home does not mean that when you move, you have to register at that location. A lot of people are still involved locally in politics or, you know, in matters of the community. And so they maintain their voting residence at their home. So just some statistics for what our office has done since January 1st. So from January 1st to January 25th, we have processed 6,174 new voters. We have processed 4,143 address changes, including 2,277 address confirmations. We have processed 635 name changes. We've rejected 122 applications. And we have canceled 4,513 voters. So voter registration goes on 365 days of year. It is a constant process that our office does. And so our roles are maintained to the strictest standards as far as the state, you know, apply, in accordance with what, you know, the state guidelines and the state legislature has mandated for us. But like I say, as you see, I have four staff members who are full-time at voter registration, and they do an amazing job. And they are on top of things. So our current statistics are, we currently have, or as of last Thursday, 128,811 voters. 20,234 of those are in suspense. And we have also processed 1,430 applications for ballot by mail for the November election. So as you can see, my staff does an amazing job at staying on top of voter registration and keeping our roles up to date and current to the standards and the standards of the Secretary of State and the legislature. So did the court have any questions on? I tried to not take up a lot of time, so I'm trying to not talk fast but cover a lot.
I have a question. So a person can be on the voter rolls. The illegality of them becomes if they vote, they're not supposed to vote, or they vote. So a 100-year-old person can be on the voter rolls but not necessarily vote. For example, my mother, who had dementia, she was an active voter until she couldn't be. Yet she would receive, I think, two or three times, she received a voter card. But she was not able to, because of her dementia, she was not able to vote. So she would have been one of those on the voter rolls at, because she was 94 when she passed. So she was an active voter up until dementia, but she would have been on the voter rolls but showing that she had not voted for several cycles, voting cycles.
Right. And we do keep that voting history, so we can go back and see that. We do have family members that will contact us sometimes and say, you know, my parent is not in a state to be able to vote any longer. You know, a lot of people will have them removed from the voter roll just because they don't want the chance of someone trying to use their, you know, their identification or their voter registration to be able to vote. And so they do have them removed from the rolls. But that is a valid form of identification, your voter registration card. And so we do have some elderly who like to maintain their registration, even though they don't intend to vote and have not voted, you know, in years. But they maintain that just as a form of identification.
But then the difficulty of illegal voting is that because you have to have a government-issue ID
Correct.
to be able to vote. So even if you were registered illegally, and when you get to the polling site, if you don't have a legal form of identification, you cannot vote.
Right. It's checked at the polling location, so that is, you know, a safeguard for that. So in your mother's instance, if someone had came in and said, my name is, you know, whatever her name is.
Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, and I want to vote, then they would be able to look her up. And if the person's ID did not match, then no, they would not be able to cast a ballot.
Thank you.
All right. Thing is, Trudy?
I would like to make one more comment. You know, it's, I have people tell me and tell my staff, don't, don't take the critical comments and things personally. That's very hard to do when you put so much into a job that you love and want, you know, strive to make sure, you know, all the trainings, all the education possible to ensure that we do everything for our voters possible. You know, my family knows, within 120 days of election, probably don't look for me. Most of my staff gives tirelessly and go above and beyond to do their jobs. You know, it's very hard in today's time to find people who put themselves in their job. It's not just a job or a paycheck. To them, they care about what goes on. And my staff that handles voter registration, they do a phenomenal job. They make sure all the Is are dotted, the Ts are crossed, whatever. But they give a lot. My staff in any election cycle will work 50 to 150 hours of comp time leading into and immediately following an election. That's time that they, you know, takes away from their families, from birthdays, from football games, from whatever. So just, you know, the next time you see them, just tell them that you appreciate the amazing job that they do.
And Trudy, let me say, as one in my former life who worked, started out as an election worker.
Yes, you did.
Then as an election judge, then as the Democratic Party County Chair. I had an opportunity to work with you all, I call it behind the scenes, in a secret location, especially during 2020 when we had, I don't know how many mail-in ballots. And so to be behind the scenes, to see exactly what you said, how well your office was run, how well your workers worked, I thought you all did a phenomenal job. So I want to give you and your staff an "at a girl" because I feel like the election is, was well-run, continues to be well-run. And I understand your feeling about some of the comments that are made about how the election is run. From a personal perspective, as the only on the Commissioner's Court, I think you all do a phenomenal job. So from a personal perspective, I want to say thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I'll echo that. I have not served as an election judge, but I appreciate all that you do.
Next year, we'll let you.
Thank you.
And again, I say, my door is always open. There's my email, my phone number. Anything that looks suspicious to any voter, anyone, please email me. We can usually send a response back within 24 hours, letting you know, you know. Go to the subject matter experts to get your information. Don't watch the national news.
Thank you.
Yeah, Trudy, thank you for everything you do. And again, I would encourage anybody in the public who happens to hear this, see it, that if they've got questions about elections, you really are an expert at this. You've been at it a long time, and you do a great job. And I would encourage them to contact you and ask those questions to you.
I was adding up years today. My lead staff have over 50 years of experience in elections and voter registration. So they do a great job. They make you look good.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Okay. We'll move on and consider to take action on Agenda Items 4 through 15. Number four is approval of Declaration of Intent to Commit Funding to the Local Provider Participation Fund for Demonstration Year 13 Uncompensated Care to support the upcoming IGT request.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is award for CIP 24620, Staffing Analysis of Brazos County Detention Center Recommended Award, CGL Management Group LLC.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is consider to take action on Welborn SUD Utility Permit to Construct a Road Board, 12318 North Dowling Road, to provide water service sites located in Precinct 1.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is consider to take action on Welborn SUD Utility Permit to Construct a Road Board, 1299 Pleasant Road Hill, provided, to provide water service sites located in Precinct 4.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight, request approval of final plat of Southern Point Subdivision, Section 400, Block 79, Lot 37 through 43, Point 921 acre being a replat of Block 79 Smithley Survey, A-210, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct 1.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six, I mean, number nine is request approval for the final plat of Winding Creek Estates, Phase 5, 4.479, Block 6, Lot 71, or Incomitant Area 3, being a replat of Winding Creek Estates, Phase 5, Block 6, Lot 71, J.C. Stuteville Survey, A-216, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct 1.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through D.
Second.
Motion made in second, to approve A through D, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 203/24, budget amendments 41.01 through 41.04.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12 is personnel change status.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is plaintiff of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 8204060 through Claim Number 8204234 and Claim Number 9201771 through Claim Number 9201827.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is to convene an executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. And I had one, Kathy Beadis?
As I read this online, it's really confusing. It's addressed to whom it may concern in response for a request. I don't know what this is all about. It's a lot of money. Can you explain from a 30,000-foot view what all this is about and how it affects us and why we're doing it?
Well, it's a contract that's being negotiated. And it, our general counsel has determined that it's better to do that not in a public setting but in executive session.
So we don't know what the contract is, but we're negotiating it?
Well, if a contract ever gets worked out, it will then be public. But the negotiation side of it is, should, it's...
Okay, so we don't even know what the topic is, really?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got, I've read the convening and executive session for the contract. Counselor, you want to?
Are we going to go into executive session now?
Do you want to finish the rest of the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I should have. I guess I was getting ahead of myself.
Number 16.
So we will skip down to number 16 is an acknowledgment of FY 2023-24 Budget Act was by fund as of July 2024, 24, 2024. And an acknowledgment of the FY 23-24 contingency budget act was by fund as of July 24, 2024. And 17 is the acknowledgment of the monthly reports submitted in July 2024. 18 is juvenile director's report on detention population, Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 26 juveniles in detention, 16 males, 10 females, and we have 29 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Linda. 19 is sheriff's report on inmate population, sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 824 this morning, 692 men, 132 women, 40 on monitors.
All right. Thank you.
Let it be laid and happy birthday to you. Or is it today?
It's today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Sheriff.
Yeah, thank you.
Where's the cake and ice cream?
What's that?
Where's the cake and ice cream?
It's his birthday. That's not his responsibility.
I did eat that yesterday.
Okay. Well, no, I want to know where it is so I can join it.
All right. We will, oh, announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Happy birthday to the sheriff. Just want to remind everyone to pray for our country right now with everything that is going on, so many things I could list. Let's just all join, whether we agree or disagree on things, let's keep our country in prayer and that we can continue living the traditions of our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and our fine nation.
Okay.
Agreed. Thank you for that.
Yep. Thank you.
I didn't bring one of the notices, but I know we have a blood drive coming up, and blood supplies are low, so I encourage county employees to participate if possible.
I think that's Friday.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
August 2nd.
We signed you up. Don't worry, Bruce.
They like me.
Okay. We will move back up and convene an executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. And I think you...
Yes, sir. As general counsel, I provided the court with my letter determining that deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioner's Court in negotiations with a third person. And I filed that with the court. Ask you unanimously to go into executive session on that issue.
Okay. So moved?
Yep.
Motion made in second.
We'll have to raise our right hand. Do we raise our right hand?
Yeah. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, so it passes, and we will move into executive session. The time is 10:48. And I see this contract, I know the attorneys and chief of staff, and who else do you? Bruce, do you know of anybody else? Okay. Sure, all of me, certainly. Always included. Okay, we're coming back out of executive session. It is 11:02. There's no action to be taken this morning. And next item is to adjourn. to adjourn. Thank you.